Welcome everybody to town hall number ninety six, it's May seventh, twenty twenty four. And today we're joined by Soundwaves, Clement, Colly, Duke, Guillermo, Rob, Vani, Walter, and two Williams. Thanks all for being here. Nice little group. As you can see on the agenda on screen, uh, there's not a lot of agenda items today. We do start off with a couple of mentions for stuff happening around the ecosystem. And after that, it's pretty much room for open topics. Um Guillermo, about ten minutes ago suggested like maybe we can have a little recap on quarter one stuff or like basically the year so far. And an additional topic which was flagged on Discord would be um open sourcing and discussing, or the idea was there that there was um need for more um discussion around it. So we can touch on that as well. So it might become a short one, but yeah, at the same time, these topics, they might go long, we'll see, we'll try to aim for the our slots. And starting off with a quick recap on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Uh, we're a bunch of people that are all aligned with the mission and vision of Singularity Net and its ecosystem and want to help out contributing to it. And we have a wide range of work groups, all kind of different themes and topics going on. These are self-organizing groups and you're very welcome to join in on the fun. You can do so by hopping onto our Discord server and you'll find the getting started channel there. That channel will get you started. Then with that out of the way, a couple of mentions, uh, I figured it would be good to give a little status update on the workgroup budget. Um, last week we uh, had consent on. I know we didn't have consent on three of them, the others are um approved and effective, so workgroups can well, do their work. Uh, right now, there's a couple ones pending that are planned to get, let me grab the dot. I believe it's the governance session of the twenty first of this um month. So in two weeks' time from now, there will be a dedicated uh session where we hope to yeah, work out the objections and then achieve um consent and able to to start with those uh three proposals as well. Then a quick shout out to the decentralization blueprint, there's a bunch more comments popping in there, it's still going strong. And it's still very much open. And then a quick shout out to this week's deep funding town hall. Uh, Thursday eighteen UTC, it will start off with a little session where people can ask about um deep funding round four. And the stuff they're bumping into. Um, yeah, after that, there will be a little trivia session where you will be able to win some uh some token prizes. So that should be good fun. And that's that, uh, Thursday eighteen UTC. I believe that's all the mentions out of the way, unless there's people in the audience that have additional mentions they want to share with the group.
Sorry, I should have put my hand up.
No, that's fine, go for it.
Um. As I had sent you in a DM, I posted a note up in the strategy guild. Um, I'd like to be able to look back and and see what work they might have done and then uh, help it the the guild itself move forward. And I'm looking for uh participation from or or input from anybody that uh might have a an idea or a thought about the direction it should go. Um, and I'm looking at it. For myself, I'm I'm going to approach it from a very basic level. From when you step in the door, whatever's in your way at the beginning, you clean that up first. So that's sort of what I want to do with that. And then move forward as we go along.
Yeah, good stuff. And thanks for bringing it up. Uh, I I do think it's um, well, it's a guild that that clearly has its place. Um. So reviving it and yeah. Very supportive of, I think over time, what what kind of happened to it is the topics it was addressing kind of spread around to other workgroups. And then at some point it found itself without like too much of its own kind of uh topics. Uh, which can happen, but I I do think it's a good idea to I'm not sure if reviving is the right word, but it feels a bit like reviving to me. Rekindling, uh, restarting. So yeah, thanks for that. And if people have ideas on it, uh, the strategy um guild uh group is still very much alive.
Thank you.
All right, um, well, as mentioned, that is right at the start, there's not too many dedicated topics. Um, so we can pretty much have a very open session, um, in a way. Maybe there's some some random questions people like to ask like unrelated to anything like um a quarterly recap or or the open sourcing discussion. Uh, by all means, do speak up and if there's, yeah, like, doesn't matter how small or how big of a question, anything goes really.
Yeah, just to add on on Williams. Um, yeah, initiative. So uh, the Q one strategy guild or workgroup did have some some challenges and we did have some tasks. Um, where the community engage in terms of a decision-making tool, we we create reports. Um, one of the things, um, probably you need to ask on the group. Uh, probably there's something, somebody here in the in this call that can answer better. Um, I don't know if there's a, there are summaries from the Q one that where, which we can build upon, um. And that will be very useful for you, William. Uh, I don't know if we are still on the timeline frame to present a proposal for this quarter, but to get ready for the next one will be the the right strategy, I guess. Um, and as Peter was saying, um. Probably you need to reach TiVo, he was, uh, I think this, uh, Peter mentioned all diluted in other workgroups. Uh, and policy workgroup is coming together, and I think that one is gonna be, uh. Yeah, very interesting uh workgroup uh initiative to be part of it. As there's no strategy without policies and there's no policies without strategies, so that probably is the place to go, William.
Yeah, absolutely, a lot of um. Yeah, a lot of the past work has been archived. Not without the reason, of course. Uh, and I'm just scrolling up a little bit on the strategic Discord channel. Um, yeah, before the decision-making software uh meetings, it was by um. Well, it was actually by question uh by you, Billy, like, what can I do to help this? Um, yeah, there had a, did ask for for input in general, um. On topics the strategy guild should focus on, can can work on. Good stuff. Um. Yeah, I did note down uh this um request for a topic to discuss uh being that the open sourcing of stuff in general. Uh, however, I'm not the one who requested it and uh she's not here right now, which I knew in advance. But that, yeah, makes me wonder, um. Are the people that that share the desire to have this as a topic at all? Or like, I'm not gonna force a topic if nobody wants to discuss it.
Who requested it, Lisa?
Uh, well, it was a bit indirect, uh, with some uh someone noting that uh during last um last week, it was mentioned that there's a desire to have more discussion around open sourcing. And this was not on behalf of the person uh themselves, but um just a note that this topic uh should could be discussed.
No, I think it's definitely one to discuss. I'm just flagging a little bit after a long day, so I'm feeling like I can't really get in there and say the thing, but I don't know, there, I think we could do more to think about how we open source stuff. And certainly Archives workgroup is looking at how we open source documents and how we make sure that it's not just sat in a Google Doc that's owned by somebody who could accidentally delete it or so on. So that's part of it. But also, yeah, um, it feels to me like Singularity Net as a whole used to have more of an open source ethos and it was really prominent on the website and so on. I don't see it anymore and I just wonder if there's been a change.
Yeah, fair, but it's been brought up a couple of times that it's apparently not anymore on the website, but I can assure you that the the vision on it has not changed uh one bit at all. I did see some hands up, which have now disappeared, but feel free to.
Um, well said, Vani, well said.
Uh, for myself, uh, I, I really love the idea that open source within the community is a great way to go. I think that uh if if outside tools or third-party tools are going to be have to use and there is so much talent within the community itself that they could find, we could find the right tool for the task at the time. At the same time, though, perhaps ask some of the people in here that have the talents and skills to develop a program that would fit the need so that we don't have to rely on a third party for a long-term vision.
Yeah, fair, fair. Um. I mean, there's some pieces of software which are just relatively hard to replace, right? Um, we would get considered over time, it's, yeah, things move towards being practical almost, I feel. And sometimes it's just way more practical to use, let's say, Google Docs than uh, I don't know, uh, LibreOffice, for example, I think is still open source, I assume, uh, but, yeah. Sure, go for it. Let's, we can skip on the hands, I feel.
Right, uh, yes, uh, so, uh, Billy, uh, to continue off of Billy's mention, using in-house tools is always a plus. Um, until we make everybody reach that level where we all agree and understand what is centralized and decentralized. Uh, outsourcing, you know, any sort of tool or or third-party engagement. It will always go into the opposite direction we need it to um, for long-term, you know, vision. So if we're if we're looking that far ahead, of course, in-house is the way to go. Um, but we spend more time or we will spend more time teaching and training everybody. So at this point, I think what we should do, honestly, everybody that uses the tools, the the specifics, the the specific tools that do the exact task we need done. Uh, the most efficient way, I think we need to list those tools and and at least let people see those in a complete page. And not just per guild or per, uh, you know, hey, it's offered here in this channel or here, it's on this website. I think it needs to be a total, complete list of tools that we use.
There is one, and I'm just trying to find it, and I can't really find it. It's something that Fly put together months ago. I don't know if anybody else remembers it and can find it. But yeah, obviously, things have probably changed a little since then, but it was like an ethics document as well, and he went into the details of how far things were open source and how ethical they were in terms of how they use people's data. It was excellent, and I can't find it. Give me a minute.
Okay, then, yes, that that would be perfect. Awesome.
Yeah, there's been some work done there. And I do want to, uh, in response to what you were saying, Vanessa, on the foundation and maybe the website, not calling out the open source uh, anymore. Um, in a way, we're not quite tied to the word open source, like if if we decide for ourselves, we want to open source all the documents, for example, or the tooling we create or like, we can, I just wanted to add that to there. And Guillermo?
Yeah, sorry, so this gets close a couple of times. I'm, uh, I, so I feel where you're coming from, Peter, so if it wasn't for Google, we won't be here. A long time ago, it decentralized us everything. So we are, we are able to decentralize, be decentralized today through Google Docs. Uh, this scale exponentially and the UX experience have grown into uh, this, this toolings that are making this possible. Uh, that's my personal experience. I'm, you know, you know, we are not here against big corporations, we are here to create our own experience and our uh, push the the vision and mission of Singularity Net that is decentralized AGI. And that's something different, and we are using the tools that are out there. And we are already seeing whatever, what what is good for us, that what worked for us, what is simple. And we need to be and only respectful, there's a lot of great people working in these places. Um, so the last month, um, I have a different experience in terms of open sourcing, and it was on uh, uh, and here, Vani, again, you were part of this, uh, as we put together the the Latam ambassador proposal. So there are not only tools or technological uh artifacts that could or would or should be open source, there are also uh, different kind of experiences like ideas or or templates or or um, yeah, let's say, in this case, a simple proposal, uh, and we used uh, and we replicated in three days. And we have two new uh guilds uh by sharing this idea with community members, so first thing we need to do, we are open source, open source the stuff within the community, and we use this that is called, I didn't have a freaking clue that it exists. So Vani, thank you for sharing this, the Creative Commons Attribution. Um, we created a simple license, we put this down, the document, and we shared with with the African community. Strong community within our borders. Uh, we do with Ubio, uh, Sucre and everybody, and they, and on top of that, we went even further and we shared with them the Latam community experience. And I'm really happy to see the proposal on deep funding too. And that the community vote and consents of this both to proposal for uh BASSA regional expansion. So it's not only, uh, yeah, as I was saying, we need to open source, um. There's a lot of things that can be opened, like uh cook recipe, you know? And um, and probably it's something we can experiment, um. And uh, yeah, we should do more often. Um. Yeah, and uh, I don't know where I was going with this, but uh yeah, I think that that's it.
Thanks a lot, fun question by Vanessa in the chat. Is this discussion, oh wait, sorry, that that's in response, I thought you were, for a second, I thought you were asking if this discussion itself was open source, nevermind.
Well, is it? I mean. No, seriously, I was I was commenting on somebody mentioning an SSID solution in the chat.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have to properly Google, because the only thing I know SSID is like a network thing, which I'm not sure.
Self-servant identity, maybe, I'm guessing. I don't know. Who was it you said it, was it Rob?
Yep.
Yeah, self-servant identity.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha. Could be interesting, um. And especially in that, that's, yeah, in my mind, that's a very clear use case where open source would be well, close to a requirement. If not just a hard one. Um, well, an additional um topic where this got brought up, um was in the context of the decentralization blueprint. And from what I've got it over the week, uh, from the council, they're quite happy to have it, um. Well, I've like, the type of open source or copy left kind of uh license to it. However, um, yeah, input by community members who actually know the proper differences between them, like Stephen commented, uh, commented quite a bit on on Discord. And I'm well aware of you, Vanessa, it's somehow tied to archival, this is very weird how that happens. It's not by accident, I imagine, um, but yeah.
I mean, things like, things like these issues are very pertinent to archives generally, so yeah, it makes sense that we both do. You know, who owns something when you come to archive it is crucial.
Yeah, fair, fair. Um, what are, yeah, fair enough, go for it.
Uh, so the word open source unfortunately has been kind of uh, the expression means a very specific thing. Which is back in the day when software was distributed as a binary to run on your computer uh, without having the source code, you couldn't modify it. So if you needed more features or if uh the manufacturer went out of business, you were out of luck. So that's where the movement comes from. Is that when you purchase software, you should also get the source code. So as a developer, you can expand it and maintain. So that that uh goes back uh, some forty-five years to the Bell Labs Unix distribution. And so it does not mean free. It does not mean non-commercial. And uh, I think what most people imply when they use the term is something, you know, it's different things. So for one thing is when people complain about OpenAI not being open source, I think the most important point is we don't know what they're doing. So it's not about the fact that it's not freely available, but it's not published. Meaning that it's, we cannot see what it is that they are actually doing to organize their models or or then to apply them. So we're somewhat suspicious. Uh, separate from that would be when Elon doesn't like it is that he thought he was finding something that would be widely available for others to build upon. And that didn't work out. So so that that's probably his big thing. Now, the world has shifted and we no longer uh, load, you know, it's not all about loading an app in binary on your personal device. So when we're on something, okay, when we connect to something running in the cloud, open source doesn't quite apply. Most people don't realize it, but when you run something on your own computer, that's different than when, you know, in terms of the open source uh, sort of mindset. For them, it's different than when they hand you the binary to run. And so that's a different thing. Secondly, now that we have these models, so they kind of stand on their own. So when people release models uh, like Meta, Facebook does, they give you the coefficients, the weights. And uh uh, bias coefficients, but they don't give you the software, how they generated those models, nor the data sets that have been applied to generate them and all this tuning and stuff. So again, you know, there are these open source models which is yet something else, right? And uh, so I think when most people talk about this, they mean certain things like the ability, I think, uh, a couple of people in this community are particularly focused on attribution and compensation. So they wanna be mentioned as contributors. And uh then they wanna get their share of rewards. Uh, whereas others are more interested in myself included in derivative works, meaning that you stop, you can take something and build on it. So I think we need to, you know, so none of this is decentralized, that's yet another dimension. And again, collaborative is yet another dimension. So I think, you know, it's best not to stick to that terminology, because it it was a specific solution to a specific situation that's not really uh relevant today as much. And what was interesting was the culture that emerged out of it, you know? But again, that culture is separate from you know, what most people have in mind, you know, we developers hang together and we love doing our stuff out of love of it. And and so there is an ethos and so on. But and, you know, I'm happy to at some point present about that. I don't think that's what you mean when you ask for open source.
Um, well, first of all, thanks for sharing. Um, no, well, in a way, it gets piled together, right, with um, stuff like Copy Left and Creative Commons, uh, which is more about documents, I would say, rather than pure code, um. But I
Exactly, it's, uh, most people think about the text in a document. Or right now, artists are unhappy about their uh works having been used to train models and so on. So so this is what comes about as free use um, in derivative works and not getting attribution. Um. So so those are the factors that start plugging in. Um. For the developer community, what most people don't realize is just how crucial this movement has been to where we are today. Uh, the entirety of the internet is running on the infrastructure that's derived from the software that's been all, you know, coming out of the open source community. So all the servers and the programs on them has all been, and the main point there was not that it's free, but that it's compatible, that it's interoperable. That if you and I each have the same code to start with, you adapted to your computer, I adapted to mine. But then having that much commonality in the original code, they're much more likely to interoperate. So so that was the single biggest impact uh, on where we are today. That everything that's networked today, you know, with Wi-Fi and then the internet, everything, all derives from the, you know, work products of the open source community over the past four decades. That's the, that has been the big impact.
Yeah, awesome. Um, trying to catch up on chat as well. Well, maybe anybody in the room has any questions or thoughts to add on the topic? I mean, we don't have like a clear um question in front of us, like, I mean, we can turn it into uh one. But right now, we don't have one. William?
I was just catching something in the chat there from TiVo in regards to, uh, I guess, propriety of uh a document and it being evolved or changed. I guess propriety of uh a document and it being evolved or changed. And I was wondering maybe if TiVo could expand on that thought.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much to expand. I did mention that uh. Like, first thing is, is the work seen? And if it's like, no, we cannot see it because of reasons, it's not open source. It's like, yes, there is a work, but now, okay, I I see the work, but there is there references now. To show how was the work done, like or like is there a context that describes? How was this work achieved? And if this is also existing, to me, it's automatically like open source, but I understand that they're like. These licenses that need to be also written somewhere, which already imply that context that hey, this is. A material that you can build upon, which was also mentioned uh somewhere by Peter, I think with attributions and stuff. So that's my thought on open source. But I also like the discussion, yeah.
Um yeah, I think in a in a practical sense, that's what we bump into. Well, we do, we are writing tools as well, right? In um our R and D work group context. I'm not sure if in that context, if it's every time, if it's a discussion like, so how do we deal with this tool? Or if it's if it's like a standard way of like. Uh I don't know, a couple of basic licenses, you you just fit to it and see what makes sense or. But I do think it will make sense for um stuff like like fashion documents or um. Something like the the decentralization blueprint to basically go for. Well, that's the thing. We need a bit of input there, which kind of license uh to use for it specifically. Um but at least I was happy to see that both from foundation side and from supervisory council sites. Uh everything, everybody rather, uh seemed quite aligned on on the intention behind it. And it's it's not intended to become like a proprietary document. Uh yeah. Should properly acknowledge those have uh who have worked on it. I see if only just found the document that Fly created. Cool. That saves quite a bit of work. Water. Feel free to.
Uh so the reason we go into licenses when we talk about open source. Is it's been determined by some, you know, motivated lawyers back in the day. That simply disclaiming the copyright. Or basically assigning it to quote unquote public domain. Which is not a place, it's a concept, right? Is insufficient to accomplish some of these, you know, desired goals. Uh to explain the basics is a- as an author. Whenever you create something, it automatically creates a copyright. So when you write an email, there is implicit underneath it, the copyright. Of yours to that, meaning that you can control the copying of that thing. How, whatever that means. And it's been kind of unified worldwide couple of decades ago, the laws about it, so. So when people put in the copyright notice, they don't actually change anything. It's just like you've been put on notice. And there is a date. There isn't, there is a date, is the copyright is valid for your lifetime plus fifty years. Or if you assign the copyright to a company, then it is fifty years. So that's the only role that the. You know, number has. So when people rush in and say, oh, it's not twenty twenty three, it's twenty four. So we gotta change that copyright notice. That's pretty funny. Because effectively they're fiddling with whether it expires in eighty twenty eighty three or eighty four. Or whatever, seventy three and or or seventy four, right? It's you, you don't create the copyright by putting in the notice. You just proclaim it. It's created the most. You you press, you know, on your phone, you click to make a photograph. You know, there is a copyright to that. You send an SMS, there is a copyright. So so it's kind of weird, right? It's a whole lot uh more, you know, more prevalent than just like authoring a novel. Where you kind of understand. Uh so as a result, so this is what it's all about. This, the licenses are all about. The right to copy and produce derivative works and sell it so on. And if you want to, if you simply disclaim that copyright uh. And name it releasing into the public domain, then somebody else can grab it. Start charging for it for the copies, make derivative work, start charging for that. So this was the fear is that instead of just, you know, get, you know, not. Disposing of your copyright, you license it. So they can use it, but. To your liking. It's sort of like, you know, leaving a will so that your stuff gets. You know, distributed the way you want it. So that's why the whole thing shifts from. Open to like, okay, so why licenses?
Yeah, fair. Uh uh thanks a lot for that. Um looking at the clock makes me wonder, uh that was the initial idea brought up by Gema to uh have a bit of a. Uh retrospective session on on Q one or maybe broadly speaking, what the year so far. We've got sixteen minutes of the clock, so we can each have three minutes. Which might actually be funny still. Um trying to figure out how to do this. And if anybody has ideas on that, please do speak up on proper decentralized fashion. Yeah, go for it.
Um actually, it's not so much of a, uh it is a question. I don't know how it relates to the budget. But uh I remember from uh early last, late last year. Uh there was a crew, a a, I don't know, a committee created or a county uh. A group created to uh look at the overall things. And I think it involved Grace and Esther and some other people. And I'm just wondering what the status is of that, if it's ongoing or if if their time allotment has been extended. I'm just curious.
Um that um good question. It's the, that's the supervisory council. And their their main task is to produce the decentralization blueprint for Singularity Net. And they were extended from uh originally, they were scheduled to to finish by April. That has uh been extended by one month. So the deadline for the blueprint um now is end of May, so end of this month. And yeah, stuff I mentioned in chat, it's it's actively um being worked on. And the the, let me see if I can quickly. Would anybody um have the link by hand? Because I can grab it, I guess. Yeah, I'll grab it. Um anyways, it's it's still very much open for for input. And also they um they did put forward that if there's community requests on having an additional workshop on it. Uh that's that's very much within. The realm of possibilities, uh but they did indicate that they would only do so by uh community request. So. The alternative there is that if it doesn't get requested, uh it won't be, uh there won't be a workshop like that. Hope that someone, some somewhat answers. I feel it's getting a bit um short time to just try and push a a proper um reflective. Session, but if there's just any generic questions or anything, um either ambassador or singularity net, feel free to. I think water your hand, this is legacy hand, right? And it's gone. Sound waves. Feel free to.
I'd I'd feel left out if I didn't uh say something about uh open source real quick. Um. I think uh I think I have something that may help a lot of people or or everybody here again, as always, my intention is. Open source or being open, being transparent. Um being, you know, in this new way of sharing all this information, it always is about the application. What do we need it for? And and what do we need it for determines how open it should be. Um so if we have just documentation, notes from a meeting that is public. You can see that being a hundred percent word for word stored. Open source, everybody can see it. Make comments and say, wow, this is a great point. And then what happens? When someone says, oh, I said something. I forgot I said that. I don't want that there. Well, they have to put a comment, maybe big red letters, put bring some attention to that and say, hey, can we can we get rid of this? So now it's up to us to figure out. How open can those public meetings really truly be? And if we if we kind of retract at all in any direction away from open or public or transparent. I think a lot of people get the wrong impression that we're trying to steer it in a centralized way. So we're trying to keep our secrets, keep our information from everyone, but it's it's not. It's it's all about the balance of. How much of your own personal engagement is part of that open information? And of the open source information. So anything pertaining to your identity. Something Rob has brought up into this meeting. Um we all have ideas of how we can protect our engagement. And protect our identity is number one in doing so. So having the software do it or a person sit at a desk monitoring this meeting. Preventing anybody from posting their personal information in a in a chat. But if they happen to say it vocally. If this meeting is not filtered with five, ten seconds. So that someone editing the audio can block that out. You won't have that complete transparent, open source level you're after. And so we all have to think there's more work involved in the backend. We may have to use open source and outsource third party tools that are not open source. To get this structure, this blueprint. That will allow us to take any approach as it comes, depending on what application we are applying it to. Thank you.
And thank you. Any thoughts in the room? Yeah, also, I see Vanessa, I see your comment in chat on uh, yeah, the difference between all being level or um. Yeah, there being those with a higher power. That quite, yeah, that that impacts the dynamics quite a bit, of course. Um.
It's a bit of a retrospective and also a kind of this topic um regarding this quarter two budget. For example, we also have like this ten minute discussion, a cooperationally, how do we proceed to record the meeting? Because there is like information that usually we don't share, like the. The decision making. Then we do decision making publicly, but that was like an opportunity for anonymity. So we had to make a decision and also the time of when the decision was made, because there are two people now from. This work, like all the contributors have said that. One week was too fast for them to go through all the proposals or like. Here where the now is time to decision making. Where I do like the fact that with one week, we got a lot of done, so. Yeah, as a retrospect, maybe still major decisions should be two week notice and. But with one week kind of snapshot, so we already should look at the results in one week. And I know how to incentivize people to work in the first week and. But yeah, for now, we are actually not incentivized other than recognizing that people are taking part of decision making.
Um yeah, fair. Hey, that got me thinking uh earlier today when the numbers came by, right on um. Correct me if I'm wrong, Vanessa, but I think you mentioned fourteen uh individuals um took part in this this governance, right?
That was the count that we had, but there might have been a couple more. Um I think some, didn't you say seventeen? But a couple of them were not called contributors. So I think it's fourteen. Think that's what TiVo, you know.
The Q one budgets, but that was seventeen out of thirty one.
Yeah, and then, yeah, for Q two, it was fourteen out of forty one, I think. TiVo, you know. Do you know?
I need to open the Marabot because I took the pictures there. Um yeah, total unique concert participant is fourteen, but thirteen were core contributors.
Okay, okay. So yeah, I mean, that's food for thought, right? We have more people that can um speak.
Screen.
Um consent or object. And we've got lower turnout. At the same time, it kind of moved from um one sheet with all the numbers. And one form uh to, I don't know the exact number, but thirteen forms people had to go through. So yeah, that's that's quite a bit more effort. I can only imagine that's that's also playing a role there. Uh also having no clue how to, both have individual uh reports that gets a response. And not have an individual form for each of those proposals, like. But Vanessa has got this sorted out. Go for it.
Oh bloody heaven. Um I was just gonna say, I think one of the issues was that we rushed it a little bit. And there was conflicting information about when the final date was. And I think quite a few people didn't realize how soon it was. Um yeah, I just think. With any kind of consent process or voting process or whatever you want to do. Making sure people know about it is really crucial. And I think we've we've started trying to look at that a little bit, haven't we, in the governance meeting? But yeah, um. Context setting as well. We tried with a context setting document to try and give people a clue. But of, you know, of what was going on and how it had been um sorted and why it was working in the way that it was and. What a consent process even is, but I don't know if people saw it. I don't know.
Well, the document has a pure history, right? Activity history. Maybe that gives some insight. I mean. I can't see it. Uh I think it's a great document. And then that's, yeah, setting that context is a great thing. It's gonna be hard to know if without it, if we would have less people participating.
Um and also I think when you compare quarter one and quarter two, I feel like. One thing in may incorrectly correlated, like the participation number in first one. Doesn't really mean that people took time and read it and understood all the proposals. There was much more or less information and it was a past quarter one already. And perhaps your voice like, yeah, let's get it done, gave more weight than, okay. If I participate and say, yes, it has, making it higher chance to make it pass, where currently it was like. We are well, even though we are still kind of late, we are two months ahead of and. Like the risks and like understanding is like rest relevant on the impact of that particular proposal. And now you're also able to select your interest as well. Right before it was like. Do you are are interested in getting any kind of rewards? And now we are like, are you interested in getting your peers and your colleagues regarding? And now we are like, are you interested in getting your peers and your colleagues regarded? Um, and some people are doing things that you're not like being dealing with. And now clear note is here is that we actually have only five people who went through all the proposals almost all. And many of them only went through one proposal and voted for that. Uh, which also kind of brings up, for example, a nice proposal, I don't know who is that, uh, gamer school. For example, it's a cool one, which shows that people voted there for that proposal only, but nowhere else, but they are core contributors. So at least they were aware and that kind of got that outreach. I think that was showed a bit of like their own work groups, like kind of worked to get aligned, mentored. But they finally didn't create, it didn't happen on anywhere else.
Okay, I figured I would, with, for like illustration purposes, a screen share a little bit, but that doesn't really bring too much. Vanessa, your hand up.
So do, um, yeah, I was just gonna say that in terms of a retrospective, I think something that I would personally find really interesting and it would probably have to be done anonymously, so people don't feel put on the spot, is to know something about people's rationale for like how, when they approved a budget or not, what were they looking at? Cause I think it's fine that we do have a diverse range of things that people look at. But say like personally, I feel like I could learn from other people's rationales and their thinking. But I wouldn't expect somebody to say that publicly and come up and go, oh yeah, I decided because this. Cause it can be a little bit, it can put you on the spot a bit. So I'm just thinking maybe some sort of anonymous document that people can add to would be an approach. Don't know.
Yeah, fair. Um. Looking at the clock, we're at the last minute of the slot already. I don't want to maintain it like super strictly, but also do want to respect everybody's time. Um, so let's have a quick check on the room if there's any last remarks or very tiny questions or topics.
Just real quick, yeah, uh, what platform right now, I haven't dove into every, um, proposal, but what, uh, platform is the proposals available on right now? Google Docs?
Let's Google, yup.
Okay, um, so when people witness a document in, in general, you know, they're allowed to be a commenter, editor, right? Of course, um, but individually making them have anytime they comment, it's only, it's anonymous, right? From anonymous, from their name. That, of course, in signing, right, you can't do that Google Docs when you sign in and become an editor and commenter. So, uh, that's probably the only time I think we would have to move away from a tool that we use for the specific reason to protect identity.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, a clear solution or something we could try next time if we are going to new with the content is adding what one has said to the concept. And when you said like that, what is the reasoning, your consent still getting like that? Yeah, rationale, basically. Um. That's it.
And if I remember correctly, you, you can interact anonymously in Google Docs on the comments. It's also interesting, um, for example, on the budgets, like if somebody has an objection. Yeah, at some point it would be nice if there's gonna be a meeting discussing this objection and trying to sort it. So far, we haven't really figured out how to do that anonymously. So it kind of requires somebody to step up and participate in that discussion in order to hopefully mandate in such a way that afterwards they can be concerned.
They just separate the two. Separate the two specifically, you know, you, you do sign on your account, right? You can comment, you get access to the doc to, uh, you know, say yay or nay to the proposal in general, make that vote, cast your vote. But to make the comments, to separate that, to make that anonymous specifically. I don't think you need to know who's commenting on it as long as it's productive, of course. Um, and I think a lot, a lot would agree that you, you don't have to be tied to that comment as long as it's for the right reasons. If it's just nonsense, I mean, we, we'll filter it out.
No, that's fair, that's fair.
Yeah.
That should be doable at the. I don't know, so, so far I don't know, still have to deal with people's.
Maybe a separate version? I'm sorry, maybe two versions of the doc. Sorry, two versions of the doc, one community or comments anonymous comment. So they'll get two links, there's two links to, if you, if you wanna cast your vote with your name, identity connected, you go to the first link and that shows that document, so you can read it and cast your vote. If you wanna make comments anonymously, second link, and that's basically, you know, your way of consent, you know, clicking on either link. Possibly, just a thought.
Yeah, fair. Vanessa?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I just wanna raise the point that at least in the process that we've been using this quarter, it's not a vote. And I think that kind of changes it a little bit because you're not voting, you're not saying yes or no to something, you're saying something more akin to there's an issue here that I'd like to discuss further or I have an objection or I don't consent. And it's not voting it down, it's more like saying, well. Yeah, yeah, it's about.
Yeah, just general engagement, that's all, just general engagement, not necessarily a vote.
No, I know, but I, I think, I think voting is a very specific thing. And if we think in terms of voting, it does change how we interact with decision-making. And I think it's, yeah, I'm just trying to raise the point that the process we've been trying to use this quarter is kind of trying to move away from voting and trying not to make it that kind of polarized. Um, it's more about giving people an opportunity to raise questions.
All right, um, unless anybody quickly raises their hand and, uh, add something to the session, I think we're getting close to wrap-up time. Final check on chats.
Thank you very much for hosting. You have a great day.
Thanks a lot for being here.
Everybody, thank you very much for participating. It really made it a great meeting.
That's it, can't do it without you, so yeah. Thanks a lot, um, yeah, hope to see you on, uh, one of the many upcoming community calls this week. I think we've got still like six to go, seven to go this week. So no need to be bored. And if not, talk to you on Discord. Thanks a lot.